I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for the Village of Beverly Hills for the August 27, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Campbell.
Here.
Commissioner Copeland. Vice Chair Dillard-Russell.
Here.
Commissioner Erickson. Commissioner Harper. Commissioner Lucas. Commissioner Ross.
Here.
Commissioner Trust. And Chair Westerland.
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, fantastic. Thank you very much, Lydia. So before us, we have an agenda. Hopefully, everyone's had a chance to take a look at the agenda. If it all looks in order, I'd be looking for a motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I have a motion by Jeff. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Robin. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, we have the minutes from our July 23, 2025 Regular Planning Commission meeting. Hopefully, everybody's had a chance to review those from last month. Are there any questions or comments, changes, edits that are required? If not, I'd be open for a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move for the approval of the July 23, 2025 Regular Planning Commission meeting minutes.
All right, thank you, Robin. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Jeff, you went. Maybe my left ear is better. Okay, we have motion, second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right, on to item number five, public comments on items not on the published agenda. So is there anybody here from the public wishing to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move right along to item number six, old business. Planning Commission case 25-05-01, special land use and site plan approval for 32605 Belvine Trail.
All right.
Suzie.
Good evening, Commissioners. So we have before your first case, this is our second go around with this one. It is a special land use approval, special land use and site plan approval for the Beverly Hills Academy. We did have our public hearing back in May, so this is a continuation of that action item. And we had actually received these plans the day before our July meeting, because we're in August now. And that was unfortunately just not enough time for us to review and have those for you at the July meeting. So we are continuing on with this item and this consideration. And I will let Mr. Borden take over from here.
Thank you, Suzie. Thanks again, Mr. Chair. So as Suzie noted, this was before the commission back in May. The request does require both special land use and site plan approval under the village zoning ordinance. Anytime we have a non-residential institutional use, that's a special land use under your ordinance, whenever we have an accessory building, structure, or use related to that, it also requires another special land use review. So we did cover a lot of ground back in May, so I'm going to try to be a little more succinct. And I can elaborate if you all would like. But the real issue here, I think, is that we're dealing with special land use site plan, as I noted, the standards of which I generally feel are met, if you've gone through my review letter. The site plan itself, they're not proposing really any changes to the site. It's a pretty well wooded site. There's no issues with parking. There's no issues really with landscaping. The location of the building is compliant with dimensional requirements. It's pretty well located in terms of off-site visibility. The real remaining issue, in my opinion, is the fact that it is a metal-sided building with a metal roof. And the village does have building design standards contained in the site plan review section of the zoning ordinance. And we did talk a little bit about this at the last meeting. And the petitioner did make some changes. They did incorporate some windows into the building, but it is still a metal-sided building with a metal roof. So I think as far as the commission is concerned, that's where, in my opinion, again, I think this is where the majority of the discussion needs to take place this evening, whether a commission is comfortable with that or not. There are specific, or actually, I think it's just a provision, anytime we have a building with a metal roof, it does require sort of a specific acknowledged approval by the village. So in this case, that would be part of the commission's task, is identifying the materials as acceptable per the ordinance. And procedurally, this is before you for recommendation to council. So if and when you are ready to move this forward, any motion should be in the form of a recommendation, and then we'll move forward to council at the next available meeting.
Perfect, thank you. The petitioner here, would you like to add anything to, you can come to the podium and provide us any further details, or if you'd like to add anything to what Brian had indicated to us, you're more than welcome to do. Just let Lydia know your name.
Sure, I'm Liz Bastian. I am the head of school at Beverly Hills Academy. So really, we're looking to have this storage shed to store like our tables and things like that, that we no longer have room for in the school as we grow. We're using every ounce of space in there, so that's really what we want it for, so that our hallways can be clutter-free, things can have a place. It is a painted steel building, so it's taupe and burgundy, so kind of our school colors and it matches with the building, the brown part to that. It is 29-gauge, three-quarter rib HT. I'm not sure what the HT part means. It does have wainscoting on the bottom, so it's, it looks pretty nice. That's why we decided to go with that one. And it's going to match like the aesthetic of the building, and it's tucked way in the back. We did add the windows. We're happy to add any landscaping if we need to. We just are really in need of some storage.
Thank you, Liz. Commissioners, bringing back to the table, does anybody have any questions of either Brian, Suzie, or the applicant?
I do have a question about the potential for noise with a metal roof. Is there any way to understand if it will be very loud during a rainstorm and if that will matter?
(inaudible) from outside.
Typically, it's the echo inside. You hear it.
And I have a metal roof for whatever it's worth. It's not too bad. Like, it's no worse than the asphalt shingles that were there previously.
Any other questions? I have a few. I appreciate, I think last time in May, when we were here, we were talking about the aesthetic and the architectural appeal of the building and, you know, trying to point to the academy itself and the color and the architecture of the existing buildings and trying to tie it in to complement that. And appreciate the windows, and I know you mentioned a wainsco, but I don't see it on the plans. As I'm looking at here, the metal siding appears to go right to the gray, other than the concrete slab at which it's at, but it isn't, you know, I think last time I was speaking specifically of providing a couple courses of masonry around that would match the masonry that's on the addition on that end of the building to kind of tie it in together, just because it's right to the edge of it. And I don't see that as that was developed any further.
It's like a painting. It's like a stripe across the bottom. And on their drawings, I think they had called it wainscoting. It's not masonry.
And I guess that added to my confusion too, a little bit, looking at the set of drawings. We've got two sets of plans and elevations. So we want to make sure that we're consistent, because the one set of drawings for, there lists as A201, and then comparing that to the drawing from, I'm assuming it's from the steel, the pre-enchained steel manufacturer, shows the window. So we're lacking consistency, and that can be problematic if we're moving this forward, because then we don't, you know, I'm talking about somebody in the future, five years down the road, looking at it, and they're not sure what it is the planning commission approved, which set of documents, the representation of the building that's going to be implemented. And this is all about record-keeping, right, and knowing to know what exactly it is that our motion, our action has been here at this table.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just real quickly, and I don't want to speak for the petitioner, but they did confirm after my review letter was issued and more recently, that the set of plans that they are intending to proceed with are the ones with the windows cut out, just for clarification. So if it does move forward, again, the next set of submittal materials that would go forward to council would remove the second set or the duplicate set with the confusion, I guess, or helping to avoid the confusion.
Okay, I'm just looking to see where I can understand the wainsco. Which set of drawings is it on? Is it on this sheet?
So I think it was like on my original order picture. I don't know, because it's just the color. Nothing is different.
Liz, can you come to the podium, please? Thank you. So I don't know which set of drawings it is on, but it's more so just the color. So there's not, it's still the steel gauge, and it's just the color. So it's like a striping along the bottom.
And that is not, that's not the set of plans that are in this presentation, right?
It was in the previous mission, the previous number.
Okay. Yeah, I just didn't grab, since this was the controlling plan, this is the rendering that I grabbed for the PowerPoint, but you do have both.
Suzie, are you saying it's in the packet, that there's a color?
Yeah, I gave both. What's the password?
I don't see a, I don't know, maybe I just have a different set, but I don't see a color rendition. So these are, I guess, this is exposed fastener, metal siding, and it's going to be painted. What about the roof? Is that going to be a painted roof, or is it going to be a galvanized roof? I think that's part of, you know, the overall look too, is galvanized, galvanized material is less than desirable from an aesthetic standpoint.
So it's all the same material, Class A rated, 29-gauge, three-quarter rib HT painted steel.
It will be painted.
It will be painted, yeah.
In reading the documents, it said painted or galvanized. So I just wanted to clarify which it is that will be, that you're intending to construct.
Yes, it will be painted, so that way it looks nice and matches our style of our building and our school colors.
Do you happen to have the colors selection with you, samples?
I couldn't find it on my phone. It's like a burgundy and a, like a taupey, like beige color.
Where's the burgundy going to be placed? No, I'd love to, love to see what the, and, you know, you can start with Jeff, too. He can see. It'd be like Santa, while you're walking across. So the blue is actually a taupe? Is that the intent? My concerns are just about making sure that we're clear as to the understanding of what it is, what this building is actually looking like when we're considering a motion to move this in whatever direction we choose to. And I just point out to the other commissioners about the items in Brian's memo regarding reviews by the, by public service fire marshal and engineering consultant, and then lighting. I went up to the site at night, and, you know, those poles, the first two poles that are quite deep into the property is right at their circle drive. And I think that, you know, it appeared that they're illuminating just within the property. It seemed. I guess the only other thing is, as I look at it, thank you for identifying the location of the light poles along the north side of the property. I just would like to see them extended to identify all the light poles on the south side of the property as well. That illuminates the parking lot and the wall packs at the storage area, just so then, again, it's a record copy of, we know that it's not just lights on just the north end of the site, there's lights on the south end of the site.
Chair, if I may, I was incorrect. I do not actually, I don't have a color rendering within any of the plan sets that, either from the one, the current one, or from May, when it was originally submitted. So if you could resum that, that'd be great.
I don't know if anybody has any other comments, questions for the applicant or Brian or Suzie?
I have a question, Mr. Chair. So Brian, with respect to what you said earlier, because this is a metal roof and among other things, we have to make a recommendation. A recommendation will go to council?
Correct. So, right, so the overall recommendation would be related to the special use and site plan approval, but within that motion or motions, I do feel it's important to specifically note that the allowance or lack thereof for use of the metal roof, because that is specifically noted. There is, there is a lot of discretion within the building design standards in the ordinance, but as I mentioned earlier, there is a specific notation that the use of a metal roof does require a specific authorization from the village. So I think it would be appropriate for the commission to incorporate that into a motion, if it's favorable.
Okay. And with that, if it's a favorable motion, it goes to council, and they could approve it, approve that waiver, if you will.
Correct.
Okay, I see, all right. If they deny it, what happens? Then it's just a done deal, right?
Yeah, it would, I mean, there's a couple of different directions it could go. I mean, council could look at it, council could, they could grant special use and site plan, but they could condition it on no metal roof, no, I mean, there's, they don't have to use the discretion to allow the metal, but they could.
So we allow metal roofs for residential, right?
Not standing seam, right? It's the seam. We allow, have a metal roof, can't be a standing seam metal roof.
I guess I want to point out that, you know, this, from an architectural standpoint, a standing seam metal roof is more architecturally aesthetically pleasing than, this is a metal rib gavel, just a, it's not really a rib, it's an overlapping of a corrugation, it's a corrugated roof, really. This is, I wish we had actually samples to look at it, because that really tells the difference between a metal roof, that's a ribbed metal roof, that it sticks up with a three-inch-high leg, every 12 inches on the center. This is, by looking at the drawings and understanding a pre-enchained metal building here, that this is a corrugated metal roof, and the siding is also corrugated going up. So it's, it's, yeah, it is. It's what you see typically on, a lot of times you'll see in agricultural buildings.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's what we use at work all the time.
Whereas a standing seam is a different level up from a corrugated.
But we don't allow standing seam, we allowed those.
I don't think, I think the understanding from Brian, you've corrected me for any metal roof.
The, the, yeah, I'm, sorry, Mr. Chair. The verbiage in the ordinance is specific to standing seam metal roof system, is how it's phrased. That requires, as I noted, it shall be permitted only by special approval from the village, when it is demonstrated to be compatible with the residential character of the village.
See, that's speaking to a standing seam metal roof, and this is not a standing seam metal roof.
So this would, this is not a standing seam, therefore, that does not apply to this.
In my opinion, it does not, because it's, at a minimum, it needs to be standing seam roof.
I'm trying to understand, like, why we care if it's metal or not. Is there something I'm missing?
It's in the ordinance.
Yeah, again, it's, there's a lot of discretion built into this, but there are, you know, let me just hit a few things. This kind of hits at the intent, I believe. So this is, this is where you can use discretion when the following are demonstrated, design and materials are found to be in keeping with the intended character of the village, materials are found to be permanent and durable, design and materials are compatible with the type of use and development proposed, design and materials can easily be adapted to another use in the future, design and materials meet the intent of the article, project involves, that doesn't imply, sorry. So, I mean, that kind of hits at what the intent is. The intent is for durable, long-lasting materials that are in keeping with the character of the village. And I guess, as I mentioned back in May, and as I sort of really glossed over tonight, but it is in my letter, you know, that's really the question I have, is, is this metal building with the metal roof in keeping with what was intended by this particular provision and really what we're looking for in the community?
Yeah, and I think, I took a picture, I don't know if it's still on my phone, of their existing, they have a metal roof on their addition to the north, but I believe that is a standing seam metal roof, where this is a corrugated metal roof, vastly different. So whenever that was approved, I'm, and it's just a manseur, it's not the entire roof, but that was a architectural feature, is what I'm assuming, looking at, just looking at the building. And this, so this roof does not qualify as a standing seam metal roof? Okay.
I don't know that I really. So tucked far back behind there. I don't think I could.
However, it's adjacent to the front, so is that driveway. Yeah, I don't have that, those pictures anymore. They don't show clearly enough on Google Earth.
I have another question, Ryan. So the, under your buildings portion, where you talk about whether or not this even applies to accessory building, so that's the first step that we have to even overcome, going to even get to the metal roof?
Absolutely. There is not a distinction. I mean, I think the conservative part of me says it's a reference to building design. This is a building, so the conservative side of me wants to say that it does. I guess what I was going for was, I don't know if the intent was for this, like, I get it for the school building, for the principal building, if we're talking about a church, a school, another institutional use, for sure. I think that's, at that point, the materials, the design of the building are very important for the long-term stability of the project, the site, and the village. I don't know if a small accessory building for storing some lawn equipment and some extra tables and chairs rises to that level or not. So that was really, my point was, I wanted to bring it up because I didn't feel comfortable saying that it should or it should not, and I felt as though we needed to have this discussion to bring it to a conclusion without me pushing forward too strongly, I guess, one way or the other.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I just, I guess for my purposes of understanding, that is sort of my starting point. I'm learning from you as far as metal roofing goes. No clue. I have no idea of corrugated, seen nothing about it. So I'm starting at just the ordinance, the parts that I know. So I guess if there is a recommendation made, or a motion made for recommendation, if we're talking specifically about the metal roof, that's one thing, but Brian, just so that I'm clear, because I would like to make a motion, I just want to make sure it's proper, am I also considering recommending to council approval, no, not approval, recommending that they adopt the site plan? That would be a recommendation, right?
Correct.
With the?
Special land use.
Special land use. Do I also talk about the metal roofing? Or even the accessory unit? Because that's, I think that's where my confusion lies. Like, how do we even get to the metal roof if we can't get past the accessory unit application of the ordinance?
Well, that's what we have to determine, I think. Your overarching, again, your overarching recommendation is related to the special use and site plan. And I think subsequent to that, we need to, if, again, if it's favorable, I think we need to address the roof scenario. Now, getting, and again, Patrick being the architect, you know a lot more about the materials, the design, I think, than most of us here. You know, I don't think it would be inappropriate if the commission felt that conditions were needed to bring this building up to a point to use your discretion. The two things that I've heard in the course of two meetings are, from tonight, changing out the roof to an actual standing seam metal roof from what is being proposed, and also the idea of a protective band around the base, which was discussed back in May, the idea, whether it's masonry, whether it's some other material, to help really ensure. And I think really one of the big concerns, Mr. Chair, is weed whips and other things that happen at ground level, where the metal meets the foundation, meets the ground, that can really take a lot of abuse and be damaged, and then maybe it doesn't last so long. So I think those, to me, based on what I've heard over the course of two meetings, if the commission was so inclined, I think it would be appropriate for you to incorporate those two conditions if you were going to make a favorable recommendation.
I guess I can answer that, is, if we're not comfortable, if not everybody's uncomfortable of what the material is, we can ask the applicant to provide samples of the materials.
I do have a question for the applicant. Is this, because I wasn't here at the last meeting, or anyone, is this for garage purposes or is it just straight-up storage?
Storage.
Storage. It's got a bay door, but it's basically.
Right, and there's no intent to store large, like, outdoor equipment.
Tables, chairs.
Tables, chairs, it's extra, like, school supplies, whatever they may need, would typically be taking up space within the school.
And Suzie, because of the numbers we have tonight, we need all five, an affirmative or a simple majority.
Simple majority.
So I'd be, had a lot of discussion. We have a couple of different choices that we can move forward. We can motion either way, we can motion a part of it, we can ask applicant to provide more detail. However we want to proceed, it's up to us. Making sure that we're all comfortable with what it is that we're moving on one way or the other.
I mean, I'm prepared, I guess I can make the motion at this point, if nobody else wants to try. So, Mr. Chair, in terms of a motion, I guess I would move that we recommend to council the site plan approval for special land use, with the conditions that we've sort of identified here tonight, one being, what do you call it around the building?
Wainsco.
The wainscoating around the building be, I don't know, whatever.
He lets you hang in there, Robin. I was waiting for him to help.
You know, I want to make sure I say it right, you know, I'm saying the right things.
Last time I articulated that it would behoove to have some masonry around the perimeter of the building, to protect it against lawn maintenance and snow buildup against it. Typically, the buildings will tend to see abuse at that grade level. So that was, that was my thoughts at the last meeting, and what I was discussing was a masonry, wainscoat around all four sides.
Okay.
And then the, the discussion between standing seam metal roof versus a corrugated metal roof, those were my other thoughts. I'm just making clarity of my.
Okay. So as it relates to, so I'll continue my motion with the first part, you have that down, thank you, Brian. With the additional conditions that the wainsco- With the additional conditions that the Wayne's coating masonry be around all four sides to protect against elements and other things, and the other condition that I will add for my motion is, sorry, let me go back to it, that it meet any comments, or that it also address any comments provided by the Department of Public Services, the fire marshal, or the village engineering consultant, as well as... Okay, I'm going to stop it right there. Did I miss something?
Roof.
Did you want to include the...
No, I did not.
Not changing the roof?
I did not include that in my motion.
Okay. So, we have a motion for recommendation to council to approve the site plan special land use, with the conditions of providing a masonry Wayne's coat around the building, and to meet and address the comments from engineering, public safety, and fire marshal. Do I have a second? Second by Charlie. Any discussion? I guess we'll do a roll call vote.
Commissioner Campbell?
No.
Commissioner Copeland?
Yes.
Vice Chair Dillard-Rusaw?
Yes.
Commissioner Ross?
Yes.
And then Chair Westerland.
No. Now, do we need to provide some direction to council regarding the roof at all, or because it wasn't part of it, it's, we don't have to move?
I think, I think that is now in council's hands.
Okay. All right, so you've recommended approval to council, so they'll check with Suzie's office as far as providing further documentation, as far as the conditions that were outlined in the motion.
Sounds good.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep, we'll touch base tomorrow. Probably afternoon, closer to the afternoon.
You're welcome. Have a good night. All right, planning commission case, item, oh, we're in item seven, new business, planning commission case 25-08-01, special land use and site plan approval for 22055 West 14 Mile Road.
Great.
Suzie.
Hi. All right, so, new business, this is over at Northbrook Presbyterian Church, similarly to our last case, this is special land use and site plan approval. We do have a public hearing this evening, so let's not forget about that. But they are seeking to construct a detached garage, demolish the existing garage, and construct a new detached garage that will accommodate their needs. I am going to turn this one over to Brian Isbell to run through his review better.
Thank you again, Suzie. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Okay, so, because we've not seen this one before, I will maybe take a little bit more time with this. So, similar to the last case, this project also requires special land use and site plan approval. Again, procedurally, this is in front of commission for public hearing and recommendation to village council. So, if you are so inclined this evening, any motion you make would be in the form of a recommendation, and then council will have final approval authority over the special land use and site plan. As Suzie noted, do we have, can we go through some of these?
Yeah.
Ooh.
Yeah, right? I know how to zoom in now.
I'm going to leave it on that one. So, again, another detached accessory building, as Suzie noted, they are demolishing the existing building, proposing this building in its place. Again, this is another institutional campus-type property, and this is another really heavily wooded site around the perimeter. I think it's pretty well buffered. I do have a few comments I'd like to get through, so generally, if you make your way through my full review letter, I do believe the special land use standards are met. I did not find any real issues with that. However, I did ask for some detail from the applicant. I would like some confirmation as to whether or not there is any tree removal needed for this new location. When you look at the site plan, you look at the aerial photo, it does look like the building is going in a relatively open space on the property, but as part of the special land use standards, one of the, at least one of the criteria is related to the, basically, the natural environment protection thereof. So, I think tree removal falls within that category, at least in my opinion, so I would like the petitioner to identify that as part of their presentation. I won't say similar to. This is a, one of the items in your accessory building regulations, and there is a requirement related to the ratio of building width to length. This proposed building is slightly in excess of the said ratio, though the planning commission does have discretion to allow that. So, the second point in my review letter is, commission would need to specifically incorporate that into a favorable motion, and the finding in the ordinance is specific to that it will not adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. So, if you believe that to be the case, that should be, in my opinion, I would like to see that pointed out specifically in a motion. The building itself, design-wise, was intended essentially to match that of the principal building. It is a horizontal-sided building with a masonry base fully surrounding, and asphalt shingles on the pitched roof. So, we don't have metal roof issues with this one, and we don't have metal siding issues with this one. I did ask for specific notation from the petitioner on the exact type of horizontal siding that is proposed. It is not specifically identified, so I would like to see that, again, as part of their presentation. I'd like them to give you a little more information on that. Lighting, this is another one, again, I don't believe there are any issues, but anytime we have a previously developed site in it for, or in front of you for a new special use and site plan review, I want to make sure we cover our bases. So, if there are any concerns, or if there have been any issues that have arisen regarding site lighting, then we would want to try to address that as part of this. I don't believe that to be the case, but I like to keep that in there in case commission is aware of anything specific, or if we get residents in for the public hearing who have specific concerns potentially related to something such as lighting. This is another one, just sort of a catch-all I like to do on existing sites. Again, site is pretty well landscaped, some really dense buffering along the perimeter. I do like to keep this in, so if there are any dead or diseased mature trees on site or any other vegetation, I always like to see that replaced as part of the project. The ordinance requires that anyway, just as simple maintenance of a site, but because we're given a specific opportunity to look at the site and consider granting them another approval, I like to keep that in my reviews as well. So, if that is something commission sort of agrees with, I don't have a specific tree or a specific location on the property in mind, but I think a general statement of that being a condition moving forward, I think, would be acceptable in this case. And then you always have the authority, as a sidebar to that, to require additional landscaping, so if we feel there are areas where buffering is deficient, or there are issues in terms of compliance with current landscape standards, you can always require them to improve the landscape. They are proposing a new waste receptacle enclosure. Right now, it is, or at least in the plans that were originally submitted, there were some deficiencies. It did need to contain a full three-sided enclosure with a gate. In this case, it was proposed as a two-sided enclosure with a berm for the third side. That is not something that's specifically noted as allowable in the ordinance, and the sides are to replicate the materials in the principal building. They have proposed wood, at least originally, so I think there are some improvements that are needed there. Your ordinance also requires a reinforced concrete base pad for waste receptacles, very common requirement. The original plan was slightly deficient in the size of that base pad. I do want to point out, before I close my comments, petitioner did provide some comments, and there were some revisions that were submitted. I did not have time to review them in relation to the comments in my review letter, so everything I just walked through was based on the original submittal. I know Suzie did receive, though, you have a cover letter, I think this made the package, right?
That was emailed to right and early this morning.
Perfect. So, I say that because some of the things I just covered, petitioner has already addressed, I just haven't had the opportunity to review them for full compliance. So, I think those are a few things in there that we'd like them to respond to as well. I know that they've indicated that they'll meet the waste receptacle requirements, they've indicated the horizontal siding to be vinyl, but I want to have that as part of the discussion. And then my closing comment, Mr. Chair, is, again, the usual, we want to make sure any engineering comments, fire marshal comments, public service comments, get addressed as part of this review process. Historically, that has been done as a condition, and those are reviews that typically occur after special use and site plan approval, and then the petitioner gets into engineering and permit reviews, and then those items are addressed. That's all I have.
Great, thanks, Brian. Petitioner?
Point of order, Mr. Chair, very briefly. I just wanted to disclose that my daughter will be attending Northbrook Presbyterian for childcare in the upcoming, I talked to the city attorney, it doesn't rise to the level of recusal or anything like that, but just for the sake of transparency, I want to disclose.
Appreciate it, Jeff, thank you. Petitioner, you're here to tell us a little...
I did address some of the questions, and I'll do it right now. There are no trees that are impacted.
I'm sorry, will you provide Lydia your name for the record?
Apologize, Todd Dolan, representing Northbrook Presbyterian Church, the head of their buildings and grounds. To speak to some of your questions, Brian, there are no trees that are impacted, just sod. And what was your, no exterior lights, by the way, there are none. Was another question there, siding is vinyl, I brought a sample. I think everyone knows what vinyl is, but I'm happy to share this with whoever wants to touch or to play with it. We do have a Wayne's coat, which I heard from the previous report, sounds like we made a good call there. Helped to extend the light for the garage. The shingles, by the way, asphalt, they're multi-dimensional timberline, which would match our existing church, and the brick also would be intended to match the best we can, the existing brick on the church. It might be helpful to know, if you don't look at the site plan, the back of the church, that upper elevation is about 10 feet away from a wall of trees, so you really can't see it unless you...
Let's see, sorry, I'm still learning how to do all my nonsense over here. I know, I try and keep it really exciting, Jeff, welcome to the club. All right, this is as far as I can go. So, this is the new and existing garage.
So, there's a wall of trees, right, but this is kind of drop off there, so you really can't see this per se, or should kind of walk around. Also, this side is also too many. You go 100 feet, this is where the property is, there's a ton of trees. And you go 100 feet to the north, 194 feet, apologize, to the north, and it's all heavily landscaped. My point is, make it somewhat similar to the west presentation. You can't really see this from anywhere, not on our property's content. For what it's worth, so we try to make it a human structure, but it's not particularly near anything, as far as the neighborhood. Any questions that jump out that I could help answer?
Appreciate it, thank you. I'll run around to the commission. Charlie, I guess it looks like you have a...
Yeah, where's this going to drain to? You see that the building's got a slope, obviously?
There's a natural drainage on the, I'll point it out, it's probably...
Basically, the question is, is it going to go in somebody's backyard?
Not even close. You've got the river probably right here, the waters naturally flows in this direction. This drops a grade from here, here, probably about 12 feet.
Oh, yeah, it's touchscreen.
Yeah, it's fine, it's all right, it's touchscreen. So, it naturally drops a lot, this is our property also, because the river is just really clear on here, this river actually, so, that's a river, it's an open river.
The river's that's...
Yeah.
So, it'll drain around this, there'll be a swale here, the one spot that'll have a swale to accommodate water coming around into this natural kind of, it's probably a swell line.
I did, yeah, I just wanted to cover, make sure you go.
No, understood, and we're 150 feet, this is my property, it doesn't slope to any property. Any other questions come to mind?
Thank you. I'll bring to the table. Any, Charlie, thank you. Anybody have any other questions or comments for...
I had a question, did we, did you, or did I miss it? Did we say what this was being used for?
So, we're basically replacing the current storage in the current garage and adding on additional square footers to accommodate a church van which we currently own. It won't come and go on a regular basis, and the storage is really just the handle of what we currently have.
I guess I had a couple of questions. Actually, you know, thinking, Brian, I appreciate your comment, and this is our opportunity, you're talking about dead trees on the site, however, it's a large site and a lot of trees along the backside. I'm not going to go out there and count and look and see what's, you know, survivable or not, but so I just don't know how to address that comment.
Mr. Chair, my intent is more related to required trees, not necessarily just the large forested area, yeah. The intent would be anywhere where we need extra buffer between the site and residential, anywhere along either of the two road frontages, anywhere within the parking lot or around the building surround, those types of things, where not only visible, but also they would have been required by ordinance, or at least they are now, whether they were required when the building was constructed or not, I don't know, they probably were.
Yeah.
I just want to keep the site in compliance to the best of our abilities.
Of course, and now that you bring it up, that yes, it would be, I didn't take a look at the trees in the parking lot and around the perimeter to see if there was any dead trees, like we did with the pedal and par, we identified those that were, needed to be replaced. And I didn't take particular notice, but I don't know that there were any that jumped out at me.
And that's fine, too, Mr. Chair, if commission is so inclined, if that's a condition, even if it's not, again, it is, it essentially is required by ordinance, you have to maintain your site in accordance with an approved site plan, so in those areas, if there are issues, you know, code enforcement should be requiring improvements anyway, but I, it's, I'm trying to think of the right way to phrase this, but it's just a little bit easier if we have that as part of a use approval, it's, I don't want to call it a hammer, but it's, you know, it's a little bit easier, I think, for staff to gain compliance when it's tied to whether or not your project's going to get approved as far as a condition. And I'm sure Suzie would be happy to walk the site and identify.
Our ordinance officer could make a trip over there as part of the, you know, just to make sure that we're...
And I can walk through the woods, I'm fine with that.
The DPW director is an arborist as well, so.
And I guess I did, I did want to comment that I did look at the lights, and they're lantern-style lights, and I don't know if they're maybe 10 feet tops, they're low-scale, more residential character around the property, so just for our, all of our own education purposes. And the other thing I'd like to just ask the petitioner, I know in your letter, you mentioned that you would conform to the dumpster requirements, so what is the intent, though, in providing the screen around the dumpster? And what is it that you're intending to do after Brian's letter to bring that into conformance?
Our mistake to the backside was kind of open to a heavily wooded area, and we thought, why do you have to protect that or cover it? Your ordinance apparently requires it, so obviously we'll do all three sides. And our intent would be, based on my understanding of the rules that require, would be a masonry sided structure, because if wood's not going to qualify, vinyl siding's not going to cut it, it would be on a wall that's not going to have a long life, so we would go to a masonry structure. If it's helpful, we can separate that issue from the garage, if that, if you wanted to see something else defined or drawn, but I don't want to overcomplicate things, but...
I just want to make sure that it's going to be a masonry wall that's six foot high, you know?
Okay, I'll stop talking.
That's a standard dumpster enclosure, that's fine, just want to make sure that we're on record that you're going to provide a, and then also, because that's asphalt area, that asphalt's going to be removed in order to put in the concrete pad to the dimensions that are in the ordinance. While I'm looking at my notes, anybody else have any other comments or questions of the applicant, or Brian, or Suzie?
Mr. Chair, just a reminder, we do have to conduct a public hearing as well.
Thank you. I should do that now, I'm sorry. I was just reminding myself, okay, this is, and I am there because of public hearing, thank you, Brian. So, it is 8:51, and I'm going to open up the mic for a, no, it's not... No, it's not 8, that's 7:51.
I want to be home by 8:00.
7:51, we'll open the public hearing for anybody to be heard on this item. If anybody would like, from the public, would like to come up and speak on this item, please come to the podium, just give us your name. See you none, I will close the public hearing at 8:52. I'm sorry, I'm going to bring it back to the table for further discussion. 7:52? Eight's on my mind.
I mean, if you really want to stay there.
7:52, that was a long public hearing. Thank you. So I think we've gone through and answered the questions about there are any trees that are impacted, the horizontal siding is going to be vinyl, is it going to be gray?
Yes.
Just curious. Standard about the engineering review comments, public safety. Okay. Oh, we have to address the length and width ratio.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Jeff.
I just, I think it's pretty close, and I don't have an issue with it. I think the design of the building matches the current church, and that's what we're looking for, and yeah, it's a couple of feet over what the... But I think that's a good use of the waiver here in this case.
Yeah, I think, you know, again, this one's hidden. This is not even visible from the road. I think, you know, I'm... Personally, I'm very acceptable to that.
Mr. Chair, maybe it would prove helpful in this case if I maybe just put forth a quick summary before somebody considers making a motion.
Sure.
I think that... Yeah, I think the issues, I think we've boiled this down to are, if the commission is okay allowing the wall length ratio, I believe the discussion thus far, I think you are, but I would, again, like that specifically incorporated, that the petitioner provide details for a compliant waste receptacle and subject to engineering, fire marshal, DPS review as per standard. The only other item would be whether the commission wants to explicitly refer to anything about any dead diseased landscaping that should be replaced as part of this approval. I think that covers it, I think the other questions were answered.
So those are the cliff notes for everybody.
Mm-hmm. Thank you, Brian.
So I am open for further discussion, comments, questions, or a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion that we, the planning commission, recommend approval of the special land use for this applicant to the city council and site plan approval with the following notations. One, that the commission approves the wall length ratio proposed in the site plan, and that it will not impact, adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood, and a condition that if any dead... And if any trees are replaced, or any dead or deceased landscaping is discovered on the part of this project, that the applicant will replace said dead or diseased landscaping. What a mouthful.
Dumpster wall?
And the condition that the plan be amended to reflect that the waste recept... A masonry receptacle wall of six feet high will surround the waste receptacle on three sides per the ordinance standard.
Village?
Village.
Engineering.
Oh, and review by the... And review by... And approval, and review and approval by the village staff, including the director of public services, fire marshal, and the village engineering consultant. Thank you.
Perfect. I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robin. Rule call, please, Lydia.
Commissioner Copeland. Vice Chair Dillard-Rusaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
Commissioner... Or, I'm sorry, Chair Westerland.
Yes.
And then Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Good luck, thank you for coming, and I do appreciate the quality of the drawings that you presented tonight. It makes it a whole lot easier to review drawings when they're completed.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, it brings us to item 7B, planning commission case 25-08-02, signed permit for 31221 Southfield Road. Suzie?
All right, moving right along, no public hearing with this one. All right, so we've been going through each of the signed packet submittals for the Market Fresh Plaza, this is the second to last one, right? But this is for the Bev, most of you know this as Michigan Beer and Growler. The Bev, meet the Bev. So, welcome to the party, man. All right, so we all know where they're at, they are... They're redefining their concept a bit, we do have... And I will let the applicant kind of speak to what their plans are, and I know you're all eager to know. But, so we are... They're kind of sandwiched in here between Premier Pet and Canine Couture, and this is what is being proposed. The overall sign is just under this 30 square foot limit at 29.87 square feet. It is compliant in terms of colors, lighting, what else, am I missing anything?
Wall projection.
And wall projection.
Size, illumination, you said that.
Yep.
Letters.
The only thing that we need confirmation on is the spacing between the signage is... And I don't think it's on this. Oh, never mind, or here. This was the dimension that we were looking for, I guess I just needed to zoom in on my own picture, so they are compliant, there's a minimum of 20 feet between. But we do have the applicant here to answer any questions that you may have for them.
Great, thanks, Suzie. Applicant, if you'd like to come to the podium, give us your name and tell us a little bit about it, your sign.
Good evening, I'm Mary Ann Dieters with Metro Signs and Lighting, also a Beverly Hills resident, throw that in, and representing the Wainers. As you know, they have two establishments, what was Michigan Beer Growler and Michigan Coffee and Creamery, and they share a nice, large space, so we now have the Bev, Tap, and Coffee House, so excited to put their new sign up. If anybody has any questions.
Great, thank you, I'll bring you back to the table. Commissioners, you have any questions or comments for the applicant, Suzie or Brian?
I don't, Mr. Chair, just one thing that I did gloss over is a reminder, and we do have a couple newer members, procedurally, signs are before the commission for your review and approval, so if you are ready to take action, it is simply your authority, excuse me, to approve or reject, you don't have to make a recommendation to council.
Thank you. I think that's a really nice image there, Suzie, to show, to show the consistency across the whole complex, and it fits in nicely.
They've done a really nice job with all their sign packages. I believe the last one will be for subpoenas at the end, way down here, which isn't even on the drawing because it's not done yet, so at least the last one for now, but for tonight, the Bev, Coffee and Coffee House.
Looking for a motion?
Mr. Chair?
All right, I haven't done this yet.
Motion to approve 250802, signed permit for the Bev.
Perfect, I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Robin, rule call, please.
Commissioner Campbell.
Yes.
Commissioner Copeland.
Yeah.
Vice Chair Dillard-Rusaw.
Yes.
Commissioner Ross.
Yes.
And Chair Westerland.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Fantastic, good luck, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you.
Yay!
Item 8, proposed zoning tax amendments for generators and HVAC standards.
Yay!
It's a HVAC unit standards.
We can change that, too. All right, so we've been kind of talking about this over the last few months, not at every meeting, but we did have some comments, I believe the last time you talked about this actually was in, gosh, April, May? But we did have a few, got a few comments from the last iteration, right? So this was... This is applicable to all types of mechanical units. We did say that this would be in the rear yard only, provided that it's at least five feet from the adjoining lot lines and no more than five feet from the principal building. It may be... These mechanical units may be located within a side yard, which is in excess of the required side yard setback, so if your setback is five feet and you only have five feet, well then I'm sorry, it needs to go in the rear. If you have a five-foot setback and your setback is 10 feet, then okay, right? We had, originally had in there that it could be in the side yard if there was a budding of street, that was clearly something that the commission was not interested in, so we struck that. We have discussed screening with dense evergreen shrubs that have to be at least one foot above the height of the unit and mature at planting. The other aspect of it was the noise levels not exceeding 65 decibels when measured from the nearest point at the property line, per the manufacturer's specifications. And then we've also talked quite a bit about the testing and maintenance of generators specifically, and limiting that only to between the hours of 9:00 and 5:00 Monday through Friday, so we're not kicking on at 2:00 a.m. on Saturday night or Sunday night. And then this was one addition, because as you may recall, and some of you, we've got a couple new ones, the original application for AC units and generators had a neighbor sign-off, which was never in the ordinance, non-enforceable, so that was removed, right? So that unfortunately created a whole bunch of non-conformities, right? We've got plenty of people that have AC units specifically in these side yards. So Brian and I really kind of wordsmithed this out to say that properties with existing mechanical equipment located in the side yard may be repaired or replaced in the same location, but will be required to adhere to the screening requirements. Expansion or relocation of the mechanical equipment shall be subject to the provisions of this section. So as long as you're maintaining and replacing, the only additional requirement would be the evergreen shrubs. If you want a larger unit, you want to install a new unit, either in the rear yard or in excess of the required side yard. So I'd like to get your thoughts, I know Patrick, part of the conversations have stalled because you haven't been here, man, so...
You've got people around me.
I know, but we wanted your thoughts, so... But I want all of your thoughts really on this, if you like it, if you still want things tweaked, if you like it, I think we should set a public hearing for September. If you don't, then let's hear those changes and set a public hearing for November.
I have a question, Suzie, so you said if you got a lar... So an air conditioning unit that currently exists, you could not replace it with a larger unit, because the larger unit may be subject to the setbacks and everything else, and if it's larger, and then you only, you know, you're right at the five foot and it extends over, so now it couldn't go there anymore?
Correct.
Okay. I thought, well, never mind. Well, I kind of thought that we were trying to grandfather in the location, in my mind, not necessarily the unit, but the existing wiring and everything else that was there so that one would not have to inconvenience themselves for...
So you could replace it, say your... Say your air conditioning unit breaks and your intent is to replace it like-for-like, it's going to be the same size, the same, all of the same, okay? I mean, it's there, that's fine. So your unit breaks and you're like, all right, now is my opportunity to get a bigger unit for whatever reason, right? Now it's got to be... Now it's fully subject to the provision, so as long as you're replacing like-for-like, it can stay in the side yard.
Unless it violates one, two, or three, I mean, one, three, or one or three, really, is what we're talking about. So if it's larger, but you're still within the parameters of the setback and everything else, it could still go there.
Yes.
Ultimately, okay?
Yep.
I think that the only, you know, it's air conditioning unit, so you're going to talk about size, you know, 30,000 BTU AC unit that's made by, you know, Lennox versus train, they made different dimensions, so I think you got to realize that size isn't kind of an interesting term when we're talking about this. I know the idea is that if you double it, right, and you put an addition on your house, and now you're going to put a... Right, now you either have two or a much larger unit, I under... That's the intent, is to avoid that, you know, increase in the unit size, but if it's dimensionally a little bit bigger because it's still a 30,000 BTU unit, it's a 30,000 BTU, I shouldn't say BTU, but two-ton unit. That's my intent, is that it's, you know, sizes, the physical dimensions may change over years because of the refrigerant they're using or whatever, there might be some changes, but I think the intention is, it's an increase in the overall appliances out there.
Two questions, well, one, I think you're just trying to not expand in non-conforming use any further than you have to, like a lot of planning standards. I did have a question about the side lot, like language, though, because it implies that, because you still have to be five... My question is, do you still have to be five feet away from the building, yes, and then five feet from the rear or side yard lot line? So really, so your example, it has to be 15.
It has to be 15, yes.
Minimum 15, okay, just make it sure.
Yeah, I guess to that point, should we... Does it require clarification that... I mean, the item I is specific that it says not more than five feet from the principal structure. Item II does not, it says is allowed in excess of the required setback, but does not stipulate that it's not more than five feet from the principal building. Should that be... Or should that be an item all by itself, that it should be within five foot of the building? That's all I'm looking at, because we are very specific on the first one, but on the second one...
Yeah, just trying to get it to clarity.
So just, I think the intent is that it's regardless of where it's placed, it's within five feet of the building, the principal structure, and then, you know, within the rear yard, at least five feet from, a minimum of five feet from the adjoining property line, and then, you know, within the side yard is in excess of the required side yard setback, so maybe it's a standalone line item for the...
Yeah, I think one of two approaches, Mr. Chairs, either we're just going to add one, and then that's the spacing from the building as its own requirement, and then we have rear yard with setback, we have side yard with setback, or we could just mimic the language from one, add it to two, and...
Either way, I think, it's just a matter of it's consistent and throughout.
No, really good catch, thank you, guys.
The only other comment I was thinking about here, and this is just because I plant materials all over the place, one foot at plant, at one foot above the height of the unit at time of planting? So we're not going to allow it to grow?
We're not going to put something the size of Brian's mug next to your air conditioner and call that good.
I understand, I'm just thinking about, plants all...
It can grow more, it just has to be at least as tall at the start, buy a bigger plant.
No, I'm not telling them, I'm just, it's going to... No, I'm not talking about mine, I'm just, it's going to grow, and it's now that it's on three foot, that three foot, that three foot, four foot plant now is, could grow to six foot, now it's much taller than the intent, I, I'm thinking it's intended than what you want, is a six foot plant, evergreen plant that's above the top, over it. That's just my...
You know, if somebody wants to plant a six foot evergreen...
No, I'm talking about growing, it's going to grow.
Right, if they want to, if they want to plant something that will mature into a six foot evergreen around their air conditioner, I, I mean, I think that's a little much, but I mean...
I guess that's what I'm getting at, is that if you're planting a bush that's already one foot taller than a unit?
Yeah.
It's going to grow. So it's going to be at four foot at the start. What are we going to end up with? I'm looking down the road. Is it just a, I'm just talking about, I'm just throwing it out there, is it just, it has to be ma, someone's going to maintain it at that four foot level, that what we're intending?
Potentially.
I'm thinking... And against your house, so your windows, so you think about windows along the perimeter of the house, you got a twelve foot, it's just not, it's a, I think of, thinking about that aesthetic of, as the growth occurs. I, I have no problem, if you, you guys are all good with it, we're good with it, I don't...
Well, I had a question that came, Mr. Chair, I mean, interrupt you, but when, maybe I missed the meeting, but the evergreen idea, was that something that was, we decided on, is that how we reached evergreen, rather than just, you know, a bush, like bushes, tall, I don't know, I just, how do we reach evergreens, I guess?
I think evergreen is really the, is really what we want, right? Like, say, if we just allow someone to plant a bush, right, and that drops its leaves, then in the winter months, you're going to see sticks in your unit, right? At least with, I can't sit next to you guys anymore. At least with evergreens, you know, I mean, we have, that, we have that year-round screening, and I think ultimately that's the intent. I don't recall if we specifically called that out within the meeting, or if that's just kind of the, as we think about it, like, I think the intent is evergreen, so...
I had a comment about that. A, a neighbor who put in one of those large Generac machines, they're on a, they're actually on the street, so I was curious to understand more, you said that the, that on the side, on where there's a street, that the council wasn't interested in that, did you say something to that effect?
This was, that was a discussion at this, at this commission, about not, not making that necessarily an allowable location, or allowable condition of location, right?
Okay, so...
There was a bit more to the language on that, right?
So they put that, the large Generac machine there, and about a year later, there wasn't a shrub put in front of it, but a screening, like a, of, like a four-foot vinyl fence covering it, which isn't totally unattractive, it's not great, but it's not as nice as if it was covered by greenery, but there's not that much setback from the sidewalk on that side. But it's a very heavily trafficked, it's on Bates, so it's very heavily trafficked, with foot traffic. And I was just curious, is, is there something about putting shrubbery or greenery around this? Is there also a, a allowance for putting up a small fence like this person hit them?
That's up for discussion.
I love talking about fences, so...
We're going to be talking about fences, and we're going to be talking about vinyl fences, but honestly, that's a conversation for you all to have, if you want to, if you want to allow fencing to be a screen, a screening material, then certainly that's the product of this.
That's not, I mean, in the spot where it is, I don't think that they could have afforded a green, a shrub, a, a green tree or an evergreen there, so...
I think, you know, I think Ryan has some, maybe they, that something came out of council?
I should add to that comment that if somebody has a tree on a property and the root structure is covered, it might be hoped to be one of these challenges to draw on service.
I think that, you know, we got to look at, you know, in, in that situation, you know, we're looking forward to the future, right, that it would not be permitted in that side yard along the street side. So at the very beginning, you know, they're, they're doing that because they're pushed up against the corner lot and they're on the side, so that wouldn't be permitted, so we're trying to move that out, so it'll be back. And then looking at the alternatives, my house, I have a hard time growing because I'm in shade, I'm, I'm a similar situation to Ryan is, but I'm more apt at trying to get something to grow there than, in my particular situation, rather than a, a small screen, however I've seen screens done nicely, too. There are opportunities, but now we had to think about, you know, the screen on, in a side yard, but if it's visible from the front, what is it that we're looking to, to perceive? And that's what is, we, we, we're trying to address is from the front sidewalk, if it's in a side yard outside of the setback, would we, you know, from a aesthetic standpoint, are we looking for some greenery, a screen, or what is it? And that's what we have to determine, because right now that screen isn't incorporated in this.
Follow-up question, if, if we, if it remains unincorporated in this, would that be someone, would, would residents just need to ask for a variance and come to the council and, or to the commission and ask for...
If they wanted to do a fence screen over...
Is that how it would be handled in the future, if it stayed green or...
Yeah, if, if, if the ordinance says dense evergreen shrubs, that's what's expected, so then someone would have to go for a variance.
So there is a way to do it if somebody wants...
But, but we don't want to go down a path of thinking that we're going to want, this is only where appeals to grant variances, because someone wants to put a screen up, because that just, then there's, there's no, there's no intent embodied in the ordinance we're trying to prescribe. And I think the, the idea is to, if that's something that we want to see, we got to incorporate it into it and not leave it up to, well, somebody can do something about it later, ask for variance, because that's just putting burden on some other folks who aren't sitting at this table having the discussion about whether a screen is appropriate versus evergreens or what have you.
So the goal of this was both to visually screen and screen for, right?
Correct.
So does such a thing exist, like, you know, you have, like, I want to say PVC fence, but is there like sound deadening, sort of like screening material that exists?
There are noise blankets. They are, I've only seen them for chillers. They're like, like a four-by-six blanket, I don't know the specific materials, but they're, they're pretty thick, they're super duper heavy, and they're supposed to be placed within about three feet of the actual unit, to help with the noise. Per the man, per, what I've seen has, the manufacturer specs indicate that it will bring down the noise, or the decibels, by approximately five to 10.
So when everybody says evergreen, I see arborvitae.
Right.
Right, and in my neighborhood, arborvitae don't really screen because they have this unique shape, they don't, they're not like this, they kind of go like this, and about five feet off the ground, they're all twigs because the deer eat them all. And it really does nothing, it's like, doesn't, it looks weird. So I don't know.
Yeah, and I, I was laughing, too, because I'm doing a project right now to, that is, we're using a manufactured screen wall that has an acoustic properties to block the sound for a chiller. But it's a heavy-duty metal panel, it's probably four and a half inches thick, it's got posts to set it in, it's, it's pretty robust. You know, the... You know, we, screening is meant, is that, you know, we use screen, we, we have a requirement in our parking lots to provide screening along the parking lot that the lights are shining into the roadway, right? Required to have a, a landscape buffer that's about three feet to keep those lights from shining into the roadway. We use screening and multiple applications, and, you know, plants die and get, and need to be replaced, that's an ordinance inspection that needs to occur, you know, when plants die and need to be replaced. Same thing can happen with a, with a screen, I'm going to call it, just a short screen, is that if that blows down on the wind, you know, it's got to be replaced. There's a consistency that needs to occur.
I'm honestly trying to think over my side, what you could plant that would be evergreen that would fit this description. Boxes usually aren't tall enough.
A golden mop false cypress would work. I'm looking at what, because I had no idea what type of evergreen is.
Well, you know, the things, yeah, you know, the typical thing is boxwood, right? Because you can keep it very regular shape, but then otherwise you start running into kind of a bushy, you know, like Mugo pines don't get big enough.
Are you?
The dwarf mountain pine?
The mountain pine.
It says three to six feet wide, two feet tall, five feet tall.
I feel lucky.
So I have a comment, I don't know if it's a question, a concern, maybe? Because I think when Andy, I'm, what I was thinking about when Andy was talking about the, the fence screen is, you know, like where I live, the houses are so far apart, nobody really care, I mean, you can't even, it's not even a thing, you notice a generator, you keep it moving, I mean, it's not such a big thing, but if somebody screened it, I would notice it, that's, I think that's what I'm trying to suggest. So I'm wondering if there could be consideration given to some other type of screening besides foliage, because I just feel like we're limiting ourselves, or, or limiting people's ability to do what they need to do with their mechanical unit by requiring them to specifically plant some sort of evergreen, which could be very expensive, in my opinion, because is, in the, the, the screening would have to be around the, you know, around the entire unit, like...
At least three sides.
At least three sides, right, so the, the part that's visible, and then there's the part next to the house. I'm just trying to think through, one, to Pat's point, not require, not setting it so rigid that people are looking for a variance, because they're like, look, I don't want to plant evergreens, I want to do something else. And then taking into account that I get the visual appeal, but I'm not so sold on the fact that we have to make it so visually appealing, I think that's maybe my challenge. It's an air conditioning, so I guess I don't really understand, like, the whole push for the screening of it in the first place, but if we have to do it, then in my opinion, I would want to see other types of screening that could be utilized, I guess, I'm, I'm kind of stuck there.
Well, I, I think to your point, I, you know, a long time ago when we brought this up, I was looking to differentiate between AC units and generators. Because I think that the AC units are kind of, it's part of everyone's house these days.
Right.
And I think that the generators are a lot, in my opinion, are a greater impact, and I, I hear the noise of a generator running more than I hear the noise of AC unit, I don't know, because maybe I'm just, you're used to the AC, that was just mine, smaller size, generators are getting bigger, I don't know. That, that, but to your point, creating a bigger problem than it is, I think that there's a lot of site conditions, and I think about a lot of homes where they're located, it's either corners of the house shaded, you know, different conditions than to maybe a screen, you know, we, we were trying to approve a fence ordinance that allowed four-foot-high solid fences by right. And I don't know if I want a four-foot-high fence here if my unit's three-foot tall.
Do you want to scratch this whole screening?
The other, the other thing I'm thinking about, too, is generators are more of an impact, but generators can be placed, you know, placed a lot more literally than air conditioning. Air conditioning, you have to be within a certain thing, generator, you run a gas pipe and you run mains power, you can put that anywhere you want.
Right.
And now we're getting in, getting into more people using mini splits and heat pumps and this and that, and I, I, you know what I mean, I already, I see them multiplying on my own house, right, there's a mini split over here for this, and then there's this over here for this, and now I'm looking at like, okay, well, I need 20 arborvitae's there, 15 arborvitae's there, and here come the deer, and they're all gone. So, I don't know, I don't, I don't really, it's not really an issue to me to screen them, I don't, I don't really see. But again, I'm like, I'm like you, and I don't like, the neighbors, their ceiling unit looks like my phone to me, it's...
My, my experience, the, the neighbors are, I mean, we're on top of each other, and they moved the air conditioning almost onto my driveway, and it's loud, but it's, like you said, everybody has an air conditioner, but I can't see how they would have, how they would cover it even with, you know, a, a, a fence that would be in some way attractive, which they have done.
Yeah, and I, I've seen some where the, I actually have a neighbor who has a, just a portable little fence screen, bought at, I don't know, Home Depot or something, and a big, strong wind, it blows over, and they just go back and stick it back in the ground. It provides a screen to the street, so it looks appealing rather than the unit, but it's not super robust by any means, but it, they, at least they're diligent to put that stake back in the ground.
And they are getting smaller, smaller and quieter, too, AC and heat pumps.
But the idea of having the evergreen is to make it more aesthetically appealing.
But that doesn't seem like, I, I feel like I notice more, like if you have nothing in your yard but like one tree, and then you have this big four evergreens sitting in a box, it just, to me, it looks funny, in my mind, visualizing it. So I guess, I, I, the screen part for me, I'm, I'm just having trouble with it, because I...
Suzy just said we could scrap the screening, I'm fine with that, because I, I think we just have to be standardized about where you can put it, so it's not the Wild West, but otherwise, I'm fine with scrapping the screen. Because I, to your point, I never really thought about it, but all of a sudden, if everyone's got little squares of screening around in their side yards, it's going to be like, what's going on, everybody else?
It's one thing, you know, see, I can see it being incorporated into landscaping of the house, if that's so desired, but there's situations where that's not going to happen, just because whatever, the landscaping is different. And then there's the conditions of a larger piece of property, so you got a little box around it that's in a yard that's wide open, I don't know if that does any, again, the difference was, for me, was always generators more so than AC units. Just, I don't know.
Mr. Chair, I think what we're hearing is get rid of the screening, there still are the protections of spacing, setback, and noise, and we can just delete the screening provision.
I, I think we're going to, especially with some of the smaller lots, we're going to create a burden on, you know, some non-conforming ones, right? Even when, some of the tight lots, they're in the, they're within the side yard setback.
Yeah, yeah.
And so they may go to replace it, and it's going to be an issue.
So it sounds fixed to eliminate...
And well, yeah, fixed to, whichever fashion we want to do it, I don't, I don't care, I don't, we're at least three with the five foot, whatever, doesn't matter. But is there consensus here? No, no screening of either evergreen or screen, any type?
I agree.
I agree.
Do you need a formal something, do you have consensus from the five of us sitting here today that we're going to...
Deleting is the easiest form of ordinance amendment.
Yeah.
Make the adjustment to the five foot.
Do you want to set a public hearing?
Let's set the public hearing for next month.
All right, sweet.
We'll be here.
Funny guy. Putting Robin in those seats.
Okay, all right, moving right along. Item, our next lovely item. Proposed zoning ordinance text amendments for fence standards, so, before we go into it, I think it's really quite interesting that we're talking about screening, and we talk about wanting to have landscape material to provide a screen, but then we are going to allow six-foot fences? Rather than what we just went through, so, just commentary on my end.
This is more fence, fence stuff, fun fence. All right, so this has been at council for, I don't know, a couple meetings now. for, I don't know, a couple meetings now. At the meeting before last, they said, well, wait, do you mean no vinyl, and, and is white okay? And so we came back and we said, no, we, we don't want white vinyl, nothing plasticky, composite is composite, PVC vinyl is not what we want. There was a whole lot of really long conversation about fences at the most recent ones, so, really it boils down to, they want to know, council wants to know, is, does planning commission not want six foot tall vine, white vinyl privacy fences, or are you opposed to white fencing period because, well, white picket fences and white split rail fences are really cute, so, is it white fences overall, or is it just six foot solid white fences? That is, and it's ironic that this is not the same makeup, so, of who was here the last time.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, I'm gonna, you know, don't worry Jeff and Andy and that, you know.
Well, I have an unfair.
You can add your opinion, but you know, because we've had this discussion about, I think Robin and Charlie were around talking about it, I'll let either one of you to chime in on what the intent was, but I think we were, as a commission at that time, we were opposed to white, and we resolved ourselves on the earth tones and omitting the white, and I, I think that the intent at that time, the makeup of the commission was that the white PVC six foot high fence was not in keeping of what we thought was best for the village. We did not have conversation about a white picket fence, and we did not have a discussion about open rail, the opacity that's permitted, but I don't think that was a, that's, we're not, the intent was not to prohibit any of those open fences, it was dealing with the six foot solid screen fence that we, there was objection to having the white PVC, or PVC period, and then a white in color, being that, at that, that height and solid feature of it, that it was not, not in keeping of what, that we thought was for the vision. That's my recollection, and I don't know if you agree with that, that was what we were talking about at the time, we can change our mind, we have two new commissioners, so.
So my other, other question is, is the PVC, because it's not a durable material, is that, was that the thought about why we're, yeah, okay.
They tend to break down, even with weed whack.
Yeah, I just wanted to understand the intent, but I get it.
Yep.
PVC, so PVC is not as durable as a metal fence, or?
No.
Okay.
Nope. One well-placed rock, and your whole fence is.
And the color white, let's see, in my neighborhood, on the ends of both of, either end of my street, I have a white six foot PVC fence that went up, and on the other end of the, I've got kind of a, I guess it's, it's, it's kind of a chocolatey brown, light-colored brown, six foot vinyl fence, and they're both kind of out. So I'm wondering if it's, if, white is the issue, or is it six foot vinyl fence? If it's, if it's a blue, really nice colored blue vinyl fence, that's gonna be okay, if it's, and also be six foot.
Though we were.
Or is it no PVC?
No PVC.
No PVC.
No PVC, no vinyl PVC was permitted.
I know I read that, and I know we talked about it last time.
So just.
No PVC.
No PVC period, and now in the composite, would a white composite fence be permitted? And in our discussions earlier on was that we did not feel white was inappropriate at a six foot high fence.
Six foot, but like a white picket fence.
White, they want to do a split rail, white, white picket fence to keep in their, because we could permit it to have them in the front yards, so that could be in keeping with the style of the home, and I can see that, and I think that's, that's fine and appropriate, I think it's the white, six foot high solid fences that was the objection.
That's new construction only, not retroactive to existing six foot high vinyl fences.
Yeah, we can't make them go take them down.
It's a non-conforming structure, thank you.
Yes, Ryan, if you can add clarity from your counsel.
Please come on up to the podium, you know the.
He knows the rules, come on.
Come on.
You make him work.
You gotta get your steps in, man.
Ryan O'Gorman, pretend representative of the council. So I think, yeah, there's, there's two questions that came up, one was the white, which I think you just resolved, that there's no restriction on shorter fences being white, it's just the six foot fence. The second one was materials, and there is pushback on the materials from at least one or two council members, because we have vinyl siding, and so there's a question about if you have a open rail or shorter fence, those are commonly vinyl today, a lot of people will install the vinyl ones, because it's simpler, lower cost, so there's some question about that, and they also argued that the white picket fence that is vinyl will outlast a white wood fence that's a picket fence, so if you have both examples, the vinyl will look better longer from a finish standpoint and things like that, so that was, that was kind of the, I don't think anybody would debate it too heavily against a six foot white vinyl fence, there was some question about vinyl in general being restricted, just because of, I think one of the council members said, I have vinyl siding, why can't I have a vinyl fence, so, just wanted to put that out there, that, the white thing sounds like you've resolved, the materials, I think you have to consider that for both six foot and split rail or picket fences, is vinyl also out for those?
Thank you for adding that. I asked to further scramble it up, so right now, the current standard, current fence standards do allow for matte vinyl finish, right? Right now, the current standards, not the ones we're considering, the ones that are in place, allow for matte finish vinyl fencing. Not shiny, matte.
So, that, and, but, the, the current ordinance also does not allow six foot fences.
Correct.
So it allows a matte finish vinyl as a, as a product for what would be a, a allowable, allowable fence, which is four foot or?
Correct, yep.
Because we talked about, we talked about aluminum wrought iron style, and we talked about chain link.
Correct.
We talked about the openness, we did never, we never did really talk about the materiality of a, of a four foot fence.
I mean, yes and no, I mean, that has been, even way back in February, when we had our joint meeting, right, really, it boiled down to colors to ensure we didn't have, you know, a thousand different colors at intersections of fencing, and ensuring that we had high-quality, durable materials, and that, those were really the two issues that actually both bodies agreed on, right? We, we looked at the standards for, you know, in Bloomfield, I remember that was one of the communities that we specifically pointed to and say, they have good fenced, standards we would like to see, what do they do? You know, vinyl fencing's not there, right, so, I mean, in my opinion, what you all have drafted meets, meets those, those two parameters, right?
Yeah, so I, I think, I think about that stretch along, I think along that stretch of Square Lake, where they put up that white vinyl split rail fence, and how that's gotten beat up over the years, I know it's along Square Lake, but it's gotten beaten up.
I know that one of the council members that, you know, was discussing this, they brought up fencing along Birmingham Street, you know, there's, there was a specific house that, with white picket fencing and hydrangeas, I drove past, there are a couple different white picket fences, you know, they meet, they meet that 35% opacity, every single one of them is vinyl, right, like a PVC kind of thing, they look nice, but, you know.
Well, I, I can see it, within the architecture home, certain home, a white picket fence in the front, in the garden area, that's just a wonderful look.
Right.
I don't, you know, is it, does it, are we thinking, I'm just throwing ideas out there, do you consider that an open vinyl white fence or vinyl fence is appropriate, but anything solid, because we were talking one time, a four foot solid fence by right, well, I don't know that we want to see that at white and PVC, but if there's an opacity, that maybe that is, that PVC is appropriate. I'm just trying to throw out ideas here to, for consideration, do we start to, to define the opacity part, that a vinyl PVC is acceptable for a, for an open fence with a 35%, whatever our number is, and then for all other fences, it's not?
Six foot, yeah.
Not permitted six foot, not permitted for, a solid, yeah, I think, a solid fence, that's, I, I think, the six foot white, six foot PVC and a four foot PVC, I think fall in the same category, so I, I think I agree with what Ryan's saying, is that the, the solid nature is where I would at least draw the line at, for sure, on a PVC and vinyl. Maybe there's an opportunity to allow that material in a fence that would be an open fence, considered an open fence.
I'm good with that distinction.
I mean, that was the intent when we were talking about the solid six foot fences, is that we did not want to have white or vinyl, so that would be the same thing for, for a solid four foot fence, we want to see white or PVC, so by bringing this up, allowing something that's open, less than four feet. With a vinyl PVC being an acceptable material.
Yeah. I stuck in everything he just said right there. I, no, we don't, we're gonna be done.
Yeah, I missed my 8:32 mark.
Okay, yeah, that looks nice, so we're saying yes, yes to that.
Saying yes to the fence, yes to the dress.
All right, so.
I mean.
Because that's less than four feet?
That is four feet, so, that's four foot, these are three footers and less.
Okay, so I'm gonna.
You can make a stipulation, a three footer less, white PVC, open fences could be acceptable, that would be our limitation, because three foot isn't our.
Three foot in the front yard?
Yeah.
Right, all right, so here.
Three foot matte.
What do we, how do you feel on PVC overall? What if somebody wants to do a dark brown PVC? Or gray? Six foot?
That's what I'm saying, is that the PVC material is only acceptable for three foot or less.
Okay.
And open. I'm, I'm, I'm looking for, I mean, I'm stating what I.
Solid PVC.
PVC is only permitted for a three foot fence, maximum three foot high fence, with an opacity. Any color, we're not going to stipulate colors, any color.
What are we gonna do when somebody puts up a fiberglass privacy fence, or Trex privacy fence? Are we okay with that?
Trex is composite.
So it's fiberglass too, but it looks the same as PVC, maybe it's, I mean, might be a little stronger.
Yeah, it goes to the durability aspect, doesn't it, really? And then PVC.
No.
Not permitted.
All right.
For any solid fence, because it's only, we're only gonna allow it for three foot or less, open, so PVC, you only have to talk about it in what is permitted, PVC is a permitted material for a three foot high fence, a maximum three foot high fence with an opacity, whatever it is. Any, and, and we're not gonna stipulate color, we won't say anything about color, and then it's, and then the color stipulation comes into the six foot solid fence portion, solid fencing, because we have a stipulation on color, because we do not want to permit a four foot high, so any solid fence has the color stipulations. And we've already said PVC is only permitted for three foot or less, open, so we don't have to discuss it in there. Unless you want clarity, no PVC, just so somebody knows.
I completely wordsmithed this, but I didn't bring that with me today, all right, so.
I mean, I, I've been doing the talking, but do I see some head nods from my fellow commissioners?
Yeah.
I don't really support the council, but I think it will be much better than.
Sure.
All right.
We're gonna have to write a new ordinance.
We want to blow those.
I, I think we're thinking about.
You gotta make the motion first, right, make the motion first.
Yeah, just for consideration.
You don't need a motion from us, you just got.
No, no, I'm saying for, that's Ryan's assignment.
Of course, it's the way it works here too.
True, you can.
It's the way it's supposed to happen.
Actually.
All right, so no PVC for any solid fencing, regardless of height?
Correct.
PVC is only allowable for three foot fencing?
Amongst other materials are allowed for three foot.
Right.
I just, we don't want to say PVC.
No, why don't we, I'm, what about, so when I drove, drove down Birmingham Street today to look at the fencing and the pretty hydrangeas, which.
Yeah.
I wish my hydrangeas looked like that, right, those are four foot fences, because those are in the rear yard.
Three foot in maximum heights of a PVC fence.
PVC, maximum height, three feet, 35% opacity, it's a negatory for any solid fencing on PVC.
Four feet, 35% basically, can be white, not PVC, can be white.
We were maxing out at three foot, so it can't be, anything over, anything over four feet, over three feet cannot be PVC, cannot be PVC.
Can it be white? You're saying no white for solid fences, is there, does that mean, it's not defined for open fences, any size?
Any size, as long as it's not, um, not PVC, someone can put a.
Yeah, I know.
Put a, a white.
I need a chart.
A wood, a wood fence that's painted, a solid wood fence, four foot high, they can paint it, no, we can't, can't, open fence, it has to be open. Opacity, if you put your wood slats every eight inches apart or whatever, that could be painted white. Yes, yeah. Yes, yes. That would make. That's why, that's why I'm looking at it.
I'd be like a six-foot fence.
No, I know. I'm going to wordsmith crap out of it later, though.
No, if it's solid, no.
No, if it has slats, it has gaps between.
Do we, do we permit a six-foot open fence? I don't know that we permit a six-foot open fence.
You know, I mean.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, theoretically, you could. I know, no one's ever applied for it, don't worry.
Parpade, it's like the.
Who would do this?
It's like the worm in the radicchio.
That's six-foot fences on the side of my street. Solid. Sorry, strange reference.
That's what I'm just thinking of. Why would you do a six-foot high fence?
I know, you're supposed to sit over there so we can make.
I don't think we should do any fences, but anyway, excuse me.
All right.
Okay. You're good?
No PVC, solid fencing, maximum three feet, three feet.
Three feet?
Three feet.
Three feet for PVC.
All right, all right.
Right?
And open, and open, yes, all right.
Public comments, we don't have any public, ladies and comments, Mr. Gorman, Ryan, staff comments.
Welcome to Lydia. Yay! Lydia is among, other things, I mean, she, she will be a regular feature at our meetings. She's going to be a regular, she's going to be a regular attendee. Lydia is working in the building department, planning as well. She's going to learn all kinds of things from us. This is her second.
You're going to take your job one day, is that what you're saying?
What? No, no. But she's going to work with me on all the fun things.
Perfect.
So, um.
Participate, which we.
Right? She, right, she, she wants to learn about planning, she's eager to be involved in this part of it, so we're going to make it fun for her. But this is her second week, she's coming from Gross Point Park, right?
Correct.
And so far, she really likes us, so we're going to keep it that way.
All right.
So.
I think you're strong.
Hmm?
Yes.
Yes.
It's a fair question.
She is paid. I, I believe she likes her salary, so I, you know, I don't know, we haven't had that conversation, but she likes us so far, so I hope she continues to like us, so, so welcome to Lydia. We're having fun getting to know each other. Otherwise, I think I've mentioned it before, there will be no planning commission meeting in October, yet, right? Round of applause for that. We will be at the Michigan Planning Conference.
Oh, okay.
So, so next meeting will be, we will have a meeting, I believe, in September because we're having a public hearing, and then we'll get a month break. But beyond that, I think that's about it for now, we're.
Master plan notices?
Oh, yeah, we do have our notices. People are planning all around us, right? We're up next year, by the way. So Franklin is, in their master plan process, Southfield has just amended their, their plan to include an updated comprehensive plan for their DDA. So like I said, we will be working on our master plan update in '26. We'll also hopefully have something for the DDA end of it, but that's still a ways, a ways down the road, so that is it.
What's the commission's role in the master plan?
Our, we do our master plan. We're the lead, we're the lead board.
Like drawing some things and.
We're, we'll do all kinds of public engagement and charrevets, there'll be boards, there'll be presentations. We have plenty of opportunities to talk about what we'd like to see in a plan, what we don't want to see in a plan.
Maybe even a.
And how do we get there? So.
In the next 12 months?
Thereabouts, yes.
You guys have several parks next year.
Well, yeah, we'll have to incorporate our, the, well, and the parks, we'll have to, the Parks Plan will have to be updated, it'll get incorporated into the master plan. I'd like to see us add a sustainability chapter. We will have to add some information about housing, but we're, that'll be, that'll be next year, right?
And, and we have to do some things as part of our, that's not Cool Cities, but.
RRC.
RRC, yes.
RRC, yes.
Yes.
Requirements, thank you.
Yes, we'll, we'll be getting to there, too.
Just for education, though, RRC used to be, you could get certain incentives from the state if you were RRC certified. However, you can get RRC, or you can get RRC benefits without being certified currently, it could be a one-off, so you can, yeah.
I plan on hitting them up actually for our master plan, so.
Yeah, you could actually hit us up, probably.
Excellent, then we'll talk, we'll talk more, too.
Yeah.
So, now that's everything for me, I promise.
So bring back the Commissioner Collins, we just.
So, yeah, so I will just introduce myself for those who don't know me, so you might. My name is, actually, it's a pleasure to be here. Thank you to the council for allowing me to serve. My name is Jeff Campbell, I live on Ronsdale, just behind Groves. Been here in the village for five years. I actually moved here before, I became the village manager in 2022, served in that role for two years. Prior to that, I do have a planning degree, actually, the, Rob's not going to appreciate this, but I'm a recovering attorney, is how I phrase it.
Recovery.
Basically, I did some land use law for a couple of years out of law school, as well as some healthcare law. Then I went back to planning school, Wayne State, became a planner, and then was the community development director, plus a bunch of other roles for 10-plus years at Hazel Park, then here, and now I'm currently the vice president of consulting services, God, the titles of nonprofits, at Great Lakes Housing Services, which is a nonprofit that was funded and set up, but we are independent of MISTHA, where we promote affordable housing development throughout the state of Michigan. I serve, the counties I serve are from Hillsdale all the way up to Clare, it's a huge swath of the eastern Lower Peninsula, but I'm really pleased to be able to get back to the community that I love and will be here for the rest of my life, just because I refuse to ever move again.
Thank you, welcome, Jeff. Charlie?
All right, so, pardon the pun, but what the clock is going on with chickens?
That was the other two and a half hours of conversation. It was a great meeting last week, you guys, you totally, it was amazing. So lots of discussion, and that was, I mean, it was painful, but that was council's first opportunity to really review the ordinance in a public setting and, and give feedback, right? So we are working, I'm working to make sure that all of those, all the feedback that was given has been incorporated into a draft and it will be presented at either the meeting on the second or the 16th. I'm waiting for official guidance on which date it'll be. I mean, we're down to the wire, right? We, council will have to make a decision and adopt an ordinance by that first meeting in October on the 7th. So it was, I, truthfully, I don't know where everybody's going to land on it. It was long slogging it out, but we'll get there, I guess, but, so stay tuned, it keeps clucking going.
Any word on Halloween Hoot? Is that still, we're going to do that, right?
We are still doing the Hoot, I don't have a lot of details, that's, you know, I mean, that's Carissa and the Parks and Rock Committee that's really working on that, and she's unfortunately out at training tonight, so I don't have the update on it, but I know it's still happening.
Give away more candy to anybody else in this room.
Oh, that's a challenge now?
I have no idea. I just, they're getting handfuls, I don't really care. I don't need diabetes, I don't. Fair enough. Trick or treat beer, too, for. Right. Castor, horses.
I know, we just don't have the statue that's already existing. Just the statue that's already existing.
Sorry. I appreciate the introduction. Last week, I didn't know that was a thing, so I didn't introduce myself, but my name's Andy Ross, and I've been in the village for, I think, coming up on 27 years. And I grew up on the other side of 14 miles, so I've been kind of in the area. I'm retired, I spent almost 40 years in a corporate setting, sitting at a desk, doing operations management and running surveys and analyzing surveys and standing up in front of people and describing how to understand data from surveys. And I was an adjunct instructor at a local community college. My education is in sociology, and I spent a good amount of time kind of in an applied social, sociology setting. That's what I tell myself when I was trying to sell automobiles for 40, well, I said, 25, and then pizza and healthcare and all sorts of things, so. But I do appreciate the appointment here, and I think I mentioned to Brian last time, if, hopefully I'm suited to this, but if I'm not, I hope I understand that before you. And thank you for kind of giving me a nudge to make a motion, because I didn't know that was a thing, I was like, I have to do, too, so I appreciate the help.
You like him?
Thank you. Robin?
Um, sorry. So in the Oakland County Bar Association's Latches Magazine for September, they are talking about conditional rezoning.
Okay.
And I just wanted, you know, I was reading it to understand it, and, you know, they have this new case that just came out, well, I don't know if it's new, but anyway, they was dealing with like a drag track, a dragway, and then it got rezoned, this area got rezoned, and then it became a non-conforming use because the dragway was in now what was zoned agricultural situation.
And.
So anyway, I'm just trying to understand the conditional zoning tool in general, because apparently it's more experimental than anything else. So where the property owner is driving it versus the local unit of government, so I don't know if that's a thing here, I don't know how that affects us here, but the fact that it, are you saying no, John?
No, I'm not.
Okay. I just want to know more about that, because apparently it's cobbled together in the legislature, so people are kind of testing this as an experimental situation.
It's been, it's been around for a while, it was written into the law quite a few years ago now.
Okay.
I believe, I think we updated the ordinance a few years ago, because we put in better rezoning criteria, and I think we put in language for conditional rezoning. Yeah, the biggest, I don't want to, we can talk more about it, I don't want to go too deep right now. The, the biggest part of it, and I don't remember that specific case that you were talking about, but we can dive into that deeper if we need to as well, the, the biggest thing is that it is, it's volunteered by the applicant.
Okay.
It is not, but it is not something then that the municipality can alter. So you take it as is, or you leave it as is, but you don't have to accept it. So if the conditions they offer do not bring the, the, the level of the project up to a point that meets your review standards, then you reject it in whole. But what you can't do is you can't say, "Well, if you changed conditions two and three to this, then we might accept it." You can't manipulate the conditions, it's what they offer you, you accept or reject on its own merit.
Okay.
But I think we put it in the ordinance, I'll confirm that, I returned my laptop.
Tremont Lane was a conditional rezoning.
There you go, we did add it.
We did it, and then, but then, then we ended up, didn't we enhance our ordinance to allow PUDs because we liked?
We did add PUDs.
We added PUDs because we only had conditional rezoning prior to that, and we liked the avenue of a PUD better, planning unit development, so then there's a little bit more negotiating back and forth rather than the conditional rezoning.
Yeah, the PUD is negotiated back and forth, much, in my experience, it's a much better tool.
Right.
Conditional rezonings, honestly, have pretty much been few and far between, in my experience.
Okay.
The communities I work with, when they put it in the law, everybody thought there's going to be this avalanche of conditional rezonings come through, that is not what I saw or what I've seen.
Okay. Do you think it's because people don't, just don't know that it exists, or they have the option to do that, they accept the?
I think it's just because it's not that great of a tool.
Okay.
Yeah, a PUD is a much better option when you have the choice between the two.
I'm going to read this article more, but I just wanted to raise that, because when I saw that, I said, "Oh, I've never seen that in use," and then this, this case was interesting, so, okay, thank you, that's all I have.
All right. Well, welcome, Andy. Welcome, Jeff. Thank you for being a part of this, more, hopefully it won't scare you off, and I sat in vice chair position for a long time, and they thought only the vice chair was allowed to make a motion because that's all I did, is just, things are on, so please make motions. It's my moving it through. So I don't have any specific questions. Hopefully the pavement will be done in front of our BEV and pets, Premier Pet Supply will be done soon for all the customers and the business owners to reap the benefits. Nothing else? So I would look for, oh, correspondences, we talked about what's in there, so there's, are there any other correspondences?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second? Second? Andy? Me adjourn.